Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the Finance and Operations Committee meeting today, Tuesday, August 9th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. at the North Boardroom. I will take -- it is now 6:05 p.m. Okay, Mrs. Johnson's present. Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Okay, we have two. We make a quorum. Also in attendance is Mr. Donovan and Mr. Smith. We're going to have a presentation, I'm sure, tonight from Santa Life. Again, it's always great to have them in here to talk about clean air. And why don't we get started? The first thing on the agenda is orchard at North High School. And if you could just introduce yourself?
Sure. My name's Andrew Moran, and I'm from the Regenerative Roots Association.
Okay.
I had some background information. I didn't know if any of you wanted any handouts or whatnot?
Sure.
All right. So thanks for everyone meeting during this very hot summer day. By way of brief background, once again, Andrew Moran, lifelong Nashua native, graduated when there was only one Nashua High. For the past seven years, Regenerative Roots, the organization which I represent, has been developing community farms and associated farm-to-school programs in the local community, one of which is the garden at Nashua High North. So since 2017, we've been building an educational garden and associated curriculum. One of the major parts is an after-school program with the Green Club, and we also have a summer internship ELO opportunity that two to five students have taken part in over the past, I don't know, six years or so. So during that time, we feel as though that these programs have really helped Nashua High North. Various students have actually come back, continue to volunteer. We've had volunteer days here where 30 to 50 members of the community were able to help while learning about the importance of local food security, access, local agriculture, and also civic engagement. Because from the 100 pounds of food that the students typically grow every year, a large portion is donated to local organizations addressing food insecurity, such as the Nashua Children's Home and the Nashua Soup Kitchen. So what we are currently asking for today is a relatively substantial expansion of the garden courtesy of a grant that I wrote to the Arbor Day Foundation and to TD Bank. And it also would be in collaborative partnership with Reed Trees Us. The expansion would be approximately 15 to 20 fruit trees near the existing garden in the rear of the school. The fruit trees would be semi-dwarf fruit trees, mostly apples and pears, 18 feet apart, and we were asking for approximately 15 to 20 of such. One of the things that I thought was unique and also helped ensure the sustainability of this expansion was this grant opportunity also includes a two-year maintenance plan with the Arbor Day Foundation and with the Reed Trees Us. So we would be able to get some help with the fruit orchard management, but in the eight acres that we currently manage at two community farm sites in Hudson, New Hampshire, we do have experience already taking care of fruit trees. So we think that it would be a great way to help beautify and also add another element to the programming at Nashua High North. The one limitation I could see would be there is an existing irrigation system there, so I want to try to make sure to work around such as much as possible, because as with any good plan, you do want to make sure for the negative as well. But we've already been working here for six years. The garden has grown from four raised beds to 15 raised beds with a nice fence and a shed. And I think that we've proven that we've been able to continue to maintain this and also, I guess, help diversify the experiences of the students here.
Hey. Mr. Claffey, do you have any questions?
Oh, yeah. Don't you?
No, I'm fine.
You don't have any?
Not right now.
Okay. So the grounds people here, they're all set to go with the plan? They're not worried about how the roots might affect? So there aren't any concerns about how the roots of the trees might affect the irrigation system or any other?
Well, and that's where I wanted to talk to Sean, the grounds people. That's where I could see that there could be an effect on that area. And if it's sustained long-term, like we want to with mulching and whatnot, then we won't technically need to use any of the irrigation. But the issue would be if for some reason the trees fell into disrepair, it could cause, I guess, damage to the existing irrigation system.
I guess that's a question for you, Mr. Smith. Would this work?
Yes. So, yeah, we'd have to mark where the irrigation lines are. One of my questions was, would you use our irrigation to water the trees? Or are you looking just to use the spigot and hose?
It would just be the spigot and the hose. We were hoping to actually help incorporate the special needs kids, because it's almost impossible to overwater the trees, but they really need a lot for the first two years. But, yeah, we would just be doing two spigots out of the hose so we can double water.
Okay. So we just need to identify where the lines are, potentially just turn those lines off in this particular area. My only other question -- so we can work around that. I'm not concerned about it. Did you plan to fence in this area or leave it unfenced?
It would be non-fenced for at least the first year, and then we'd see if we could get additional funding to fence the area. But right now, the only fenced-in area would be the vegetable garden, and that would be non-fenced. Yep.
Now, the reason I ask that is just mowing. If the trees are 18 feet apart, that's plenty of mowing space. My mowers can get it through there, but if you're fencing it in, then I guess it's up to you.
Yeah, we weren't planning on fencing it. We're also planning on mulching, you know, a fair amount around the trees, but you are correct, there would still be some mowing space, especially for the first couple of years. Yeah.
Mr. Claffey, do you have any other questions?
I just, one other.
Sure.
I guess you have to use pesticides. I was thinking about bugs and pests getting, having, you know, access, better access to the school.
So we wouldn't be using any chemical, well, I guess everything's a chemical, if I'm really talking about it. But we wouldn't be using any inorganic pesticides, herbicides whatsoever in that plan. Reed Trees, I believe, does talk about it. They have done over 70 educational orchards, a majority in Maine, in partnership with the Arbor Day Foundation, but now they are moving into New Hampshire, and they wanted to start doing projects in the Hillsborough County. So the organization that we're partnering with does have a, I guess, deep knowledge of doing these educational orchards and not having, and I guess, chemical warfare with the pest. I can't foresee the vast majority of pests, and I'm just talking from a farming standpoint that I know of, are going to be, either pests or diseases are going to just be unique to a particular tree. So, yes, if there was an infestation of something, and then we'd have to discuss with the grounds people, et cetera, if we thought we were going to lose the entire orchard for some reason. But at this point, there would be no inorganic applications of anything there. And so far, they've had relatively good results at their other educational orchards.
I could add that we ourselves don't apply any sort of pesticides or anything to the grounds if we see a grub worms or something like that. And any sort of even fertilizers, we hire that work out to a licensed firm. So I envision us potentially doing the same thing here if we needed to.
And just my last question for now. This is an area where students hang out, right? So as far as bees go, I mean, faculty, staff park in the back, are there?
No, it doesn't appear to be a hangout. You know, the cafeteria is actually off to the left. So, and there are tables on that side, so I don't foresee kids hanging out.
Yeah, from what, you know, we've been there after school multiple times. It's a relatively underutilized area. You know, originally, we were thinking about the far area when we first out of the garden, but then the marching band and other people utilize that space. It seems like everywhere else at North is pretty well utilized, but here really hasn't been much.
Mr. Donovan?
How long does it take the trees to bear fruit?
So it's a good question. They'll typically bear fruit in the first three years, but what you would probably want to do is actually remove the flowers so they don't bear fruit until the first four to five years. So they actually focus on growing their roots out and getting stronger so you have a greater long-term health with your trees. So it would probably be approximately three to five years. At that point, a healthy pear and/or apple tree can produce close to 100 pounds of fruit each per year that we would be able to utilize at the school, and most of those are going to be harvested also in the fall, which is good. So we have to currently work with our interns and volunteers to maintain the garden over the summer. It's worked, but I think that having a large harvest in the fall would be great, which is difficult kind of for us now.
My question is, now, when we see the picture here, this is the original front of the school, which is now the back of the school. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure, because this is where it was originally, everybody was supposed to come in until there was a big blunder.
And that's why there's a greenhouse.
Yep.
So we are going to be working with Kate Parigio, Steve Fitzgerald, and some of the other teachers to finally get the aquaponic system that we originally built there up and running again. And that adds another component to the program throughout the year. But, yeah, they wanted to have like a Hanging Tower of Babylon kind of thing in the greenhouse in the front.
I just want, you know, so anybody who's watching, any questions? So when they come by and they start looking for the garden, they don't see the garden because they think it's in the front of the school. It's really in the original front of the school, which is now the back of the school that looks out on the river.
Yep, it's in the rear entrance. There's right towards, you know, if you go towards the entrance, there's a sign that one of the students originally made. We're making a new handcrafted sign now, just because it's about six years old, but yep.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions? Any other comments?
So this is all grant-funded? There's no cost to the district?
There would be no cost to the district whatsoever for the, yeah. The only thing I guess that I didn't foresee is maybe down the line, there could be a, someone that would have to be hired for a chemical spray, that I didn't foresee, but I, there would be no cost to the district whatsoever for the planting. We already have a volunteer day set up with TD Bank, so it's a lot different than a lot of grants where you just get money, and then I would have to manage everything. This is people that have already done this before, and I get help for two years.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the orchard at Nashua High School North.
Second?
Okay. All those approved? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
All right, so I guess I set an appointment with your guys to figure out where the lines are. The date would, volunteer date would probably be fall of this year, October.
That works out. Once we get past the beginning of the sports season, that's the main thing.
All right. All right. Well, thank you all very much for your time.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Have a good day.
You too.
Have a good day, and hopefully we'll have in some pears.
We'll bear fruit soon, right? Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next, we have Santa Life proposal again. Mr. Smith?
Yes, after the Board of Ed approved the plan to invest $600,000 in this from the year-end funds, I sat down with Santa Life people and took a look at our buildings and concentrated on the schools that had duck work in them. So we're looking for the in-duck system. That actually narrowed the field quite a bit, and also looking at the square footage for each of those schools. So it shows in your package, the proposal, that they asked if they needed to be here tonight, and I said, I can probably present everything, but if there's any specific questions, then it might be good for them to be there. And do you all have this in your package?
I have one more I can bring over if you'd like.
Yeah, we've got.
I've got it.
He's got it.
Okay.
Yeah, I have it.
Oh, you do?
I have it.
I was just trying to get my steps in.
Why not?
So, so the schools that do have ducts, so ventilation system with duck work are Amherst Street, Broad Street, Charlotte Avenue, Fairgrounds Elementary, Ledge Street, Sunset Heights, as far as elementary schools go. With one caveat for Fairgrounds, Ledge, and Charlotte, we are going to be adding ventilation to the rear wing and center wing next summer, so there may be some delay in doing work in those three schools. But otherwise, they're ready to go. When we added all those up, Franklin Street would be one, two, three, four, five, like seventh location. Of course, that school, the duck work and everything should be ready this fall, actually within the next two months. So then we still had some square footage left, actually money left in the $600,000, so where could we best situate that, get the best bang for the buck? So we looked at the other schools and decided upon Fairgrounds Middle School with the new classroom wing. So that's a relatively newly renovated school, and we estimated the classroom wings came to about 55,000 square feet, give or take, and that brought us to the total that we're looking for in Santa Life's package. Did you, if they numbered the pages or not?
Let me ask a question while you're looking.
Okay.
Did this ever go to joint special for the three middle schools? Because I ran into Ms. Bishop, and she thought that the three middle schools were being done with the money from the bonding.
It did.
It got passed.
It went to the joint special, and the result was that they wanted to hold off until further along in the construction process to see if they had any funds remaining. So they made no decision to spend money on Santa Life's product.
Okay. Because I have some concerns with this, because I was looking at the elementary schools and the older schools, not the renovated schools, because they have all, they'll have everything updated, upgraded at that point in time. And so same thing with, like Franklin. I mean, I was, we, when we were at the full board meeting here, I asked how many elementary schools, and you said 12, but two were going to be renovated. So I said, well, then we're down to eight, and maybe we can get the other two elementary in while the other two were being renovated. Because in my mind, I mean, I would look at the oldest to the newest renovated. And also, we have little kids that sneeze, cough, and everything on everybody. I even have adult kids that still do that. I can't get it through their heads. So that's how I was looking at it. Rather than Fairgrounds Middle School, I mean, that should have all the updated ventilation system, and so should Franklin Street at this point in time. And we know that it was Birch Hill and Main Dunstable that's going to be renovated. So that left us with the other 10 schools. Yes, Mr. Smith?
Yes, well, you're correct. I mean, Birch Hill and Main Dunstable are on our radar. The joint special's voted to take those projects on. We've already started that process. So I'm hopeful that we will add this system to those schools. That hasn't been decided yet, but we're very early on in that process. So the reason, and the reason the other elementary schools were not selected is because they don't have ducted systems. So we're looking for in-duck system, which is the one that we tested at two locations last summer. So Frank, so Fairgrounds Middle School, we have new, sorry, we have new ventilation in some portions of that building, but it's not the entire building. It's not in the classroom wings. That's the existing ventilation system that was installed 1997. It's all in, it's all, it's being recommissioned. So we, joint special paid extra money to commissioning agent, come in, make sure everything's operating properly. They came out with a laundry list of things that need to be corrected. We're currently in the process of doing that, actually pretty far along in doing that process. So it's not a new system.
Well, let me interject a little bit, because I wasn't with this whole thing when it started with the renovations, and jumping in in the middle was kind of hard last year. But if you're renovating a school, and if it's costing more money to try to fix what we have, or would it have been cheaper to put in a whole new system? Because to me, it would make sense, if you've bought a new car, you wouldn't want to put a used engine in a new car. You would want all new parts. So this way, you've got warranty from the beginning, you don't have to worry about it three years down the line that something fails, and then your warranty on your used parts aren't there anymore. I mean, that's just my thinking. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's just my thinking.
So our assessment of the mechanical system was operating properly. It was providing displacement air system, which is the standard we've gone to. So we just had to make sure it was operating properly, and that's what we've done. We've done that with the commissioning process and coming up with that. So it's providing a good amount of fresh air to all the classrooms. Keep in mind, what we're not doing here, what we're not trying to do here is make sure we're providing fresh air to all the classrooms. We want to do that anyway. That's our goal. But we're looking for that second means of preventing airborne bacteria and viruses and whatnot. That's why we're here, to stop that, so that if we have another, God forbid, COVID-type experience or whatever virus we have come through, this will stop that sort of thing. So any school you pick that's been recently renovated is going to be subject to these illnesses if we don't install this sort of system. Whether it was Fairgrounds Middle School, or, you know, Penetraut Middle School, even the brand-new middle school, is going to be still subject to these sorts of illnesses.
That's why I was hoping that we had almost enough money in the budget to get some of, more schools done than less.
Yes.
And that's what I was starting from the process when I've asked this company to come in, because we would, I asked them to come in during, right after the semi-height of COVID, when we were all masked up and the kids were still being remote. I tried to get this through, so this way, we have a safety net, a safeguard, and, you know, and it's like we're picking and choosing who gets to be healthier and who doesn't get to be healthier. And as, well, my kids are all grown up, but as a parent and grandparent and a taxpayer in the city, I look at all the bonding that's going out between the schools and the city. And the one thing that we should be focusing on is the health and safety to keep everybody in the schools. I see that, you know, we've eliminated it for other things, and I don't see it being putting in the bonding, which I'm not for. But I look at this, when you have the size bonding that you have, to put the remainder of this in there is minute on the payments every month for the, for the amount of time that you spread this out. So, and I hate to say go back to the drawing board again, because, I mean, we keep going back to the drawing board, and we're not getting what I tried to get at the beginning. We keep paring down, you know, and we ended up with only $600,000. I mean, we knew the project was over $2 million. I knew we didn't have the $2 million. So I was trying to see if we at least had a million, what we could do for the million dollars. And I feel that some of these elementary schools are going to be left out, the high school's going to be left out, which I think is an important piece also. And so now, we're picking and choosing, and I'm just not happy with this, because it came in long before. And, you know, in this budget, I couldn't pair anything out of the budget to try to move to. I didn't vote for it because I felt it was just a crazy budget, but we seem to find money for everything except for something important like this that I feel. Mr. Smith?
I would say that we're not picking and choosing. We selected the, we didn't have enough money to do the high schools, not with $600,000. We then looked at, so the middle schools, I'm hopeful that the joint special will eventually do that, do those schools. But that decision's still at least a year away, maybe two. So what we're left with then is the elementary schools. And we only have six elementary schools, and Franklin Street, six elementary schools that have ducted systems at this point. So those were the logical ones in my mind to implement this system with, with the additional thought that Birch Hill and Main Dunstable will be taken care of by the upcoming bonded project, or even with ESER funding, since we have that already approved by the state.
I know that I asked from the very beginning, would ESER funds cover this? And I see how we spent the ESER funds, you know, all over. We spent $91,000. We were having in there, believe, for a nurse. You know, when you start looking at the cost of some things, you know, here's the base pay, but this is what it is when we add the insurance, it just knocks your socks off when you have something like this that helps prevent them from being sick. So, and now the other schools that does not have the duck work, you would have to use a what to use this?
So you're, what's the?
Yeah, we have several units, whether they're portable or ceiling tile. My name's Toly from Santa Life.
Okay, thank you.
But we do have over 70 different products that could fit any size room. So a duck work is the easiest solution to retrofit an entire building, but if there are rooms or buildings that don't have any duck work, we do have several options as well that utilize the same technology.
If I could, we actually, I was just lacking the word. So they have a Guardian system, which is the, I don't know which model we've been buying.
Guardian Beyond, yep.
Guardian Beyond, okay. So we have been purchasing the Guardian Beyond system. It's a floor unit. Some of the schools that we've determined have poorer ventilation than others, we've been deploying those units in. I don't know how many units we've bought from you over the last year or so. It's.
60 to 80, I would say.
Yeah, I was going to say 100, but it's up there. So those, for example, those have gone to Main Dunstable. Dr. Crisp has a number of them. Mount Pleasant has some. So wherever, wherever we, so our standard is to make sure we have at least three air exchanges an hour. We like to have more. So the newer renovated schools will have eight air exchanges an hour. The older renovated schools, the ones that, you know, just plain old ventilators, that you're getting three. So in those schools, where we had the three air exchanges an hour, so fresh air coming in, three exchange, three times an hour, those are the ones we concentrated on, the Guardian units.
But those units, I think I saw one in the conference room?
Yes.
Yes.
So those have to be put in a room?
Yes.
And in order for it to be effective throughout the school, each room would have to have one of those units. Am I correct?
Yes.
And in the schools, not every room has a unit? They're kind of like placed sporadically?
Most of the, so Main Dunstable, I want to say there's 25 classrooms. I believe most of those classrooms got one. So one of the criterias I looked at, and I had the principals make a request for the units, once we got them, once we purchased them. One of the criterias I looked at, do they have sufficient fresh air? Do they have a window? If you can open a window, you can bring fresh air. That, to me, was okay. They don't necessarily have to have one. Dr. Crisp, if you've been in there recently, if you go down to the Four Corners area, there's a lot of classrooms right there that have no windows. We have a pension, in this district, we have a pension for turning closet spaces into office spaces, and a lot of those don't have proper ventilation. So spaces like that are where I place the Guardian units that we purchased. To be effective, yes, you should put one in every single occupied space, particularly if you have multiple people.
Mr. Claffey, do you have any questions?
I have one.
I have one. So Penetrau, would that be funded through the joint committee?
That's my hope, but it hasn't been approved at this point.
And if he said it, I'm sorry. And the, as well as the McCarthy Middle School, that would be your hope?
Yes.
And the two high schools, too expensive right now?
Correct.
And the elementary schools that aren't getting it, there are plans to do renovations?
Yes, it's down the road, it's in the queue, money.
So, I'm not going to hold this, because I think this is important, to get into what we have right now. But I guess my question is going to come back at, I know we talked about the robots. Birch Hill and Main Dunstable, we're going to try to put that into ESER funds to get that done, or that's going to go into the bonding to try to get this into those two schools?
One or the other, I think I would, well, we're still in the early planning stages of that, it could go either way, either of those two pots of money. We already have approval for the ESER funding, it's already, state's already said okay.
Said okay for these, for this to be put in there?
For, no, not for this to put in, we just have conceptual approval for the project.
For the project.
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve, to have the Sun Life project. Let me see how I want to word this. Mr. Claffey, do you have any?
I'm just, I'm, so have we accounted for every elementary school?
No.
So there are a few that we haven't mentioned, they're not slated, potentially slated for renovations, and they're not on this list. I'm look, I was looking at, I'm looking at the electronic version, I'm trying, what's uh?
There's six elementary schools.
Yeah. The one here, Amherst Street.
Amherst.
Manchester Street.
I have a list of all those schools here.
Mount Pleasant.
Mount Pleasant, Mount Pleasant, so have we mentioned Mount Pleasant?
Yeah, it's not.
It's not one of the, it's not on the list.
Yep.
So on this, on this page, it says set acta pura proposal.
Yep, I've been reading that, yep. Okay. Oh, this is different, okay.
The star is where we're thinking about putting that in proposal.
So if I could, the schools currently not getting the system are Bicentennial, Dr. Crisp, Mount Pleasant, New Surles, the four elementary schools, and then are planning at this point for Birch Hill and Main Dunstable be covered by construction, which are the other six elementary schools.
Okay, so I guess my question is, so I'm not looking at Main Dunstable, and I'm not looking at Birch Hill, because those have to be renovated, and you're not going to put this in right now if you're going to renovate, it doesn't make sense. The other ones don't have the ducts that we need, okay? So I guess the question is then, do you go with the robot, like we originally talked about?
I would probably recommend the portable units.
That was going to be my other question, the portable units. And I guess the question is how much, and that's a portable unit in each classroom, is that it?
Yes.
So I guess the question is, how much are the portable units for each classroom, and is there any type of negotiations?
I don't, I don't know what Nashville has been paying for them, do you know?
Not the top of her head, I don't, but what we could do is go back to that and figure out that quote. I'd like to know like.
I kind of remember, about $1,700 apiece.
Okay.
So you.
How many classrooms, approximately in each?
I'd have to go back and look at that, I mean, figure on average, 30 spaces per school.
Okay.
That would be like one per classroom, and then larger spaces like a media center would get two or three.
And we're not doing the high school, right? We're just doing the elementary, we're thinking about right now.
It's like 50 grand to do a school.
It'll be about $200,000 to do four schools. 50 grand, one, two. I'm not, I'm not a mathematician here, so, this was easy.
Yes, Mr. Donovan was very close, 51,000 would give us 30 units.
That's why he is who he is and where he sits.
I had wrote, written 51 here, but I just said about, just.
So my question is, can these units be shared during the day, like half in the classroom, or does it have to be in the classroom the full day?
Ideally, it should be in a classroom for four days, so you get the same benefit as the induct, that's 24/7 continuous in the room.
Okay. And the high school, we would just have to come back probably with next year, or something in the budget, not unless the district hits the lottery. I don't know, you know, all that lottery money's supposed to go to the schools, and I don't think we've seen a penny yet.
Well, I think just, you know, a way to look at this is, this is a start, right? There are still some ESER funds, a lot of them are being, all the ESER funds are not going to be spent on the items they're allocated for, because some are for hires, for example. They're not going to be able to hire everyone they've put in the ESER funds. So money is going to be moving around. Now is not the time of the year that it's available, but as the year goes on, that's when it becomes available. So let's say a high school was $100,000 or so, then maybe that might become available later in a year. But I think, I think to get started with this, and keep in mind, we have, Sean thinks we have about 80 of the portable units already, so some of those schools that we listed, the Mount Pleasants, and they already had some, so they wouldn't need as many.
Probably have enough for two full schools, at least.
Yeah, so, you know, I think we get started on this, these six schools, and then, you know, it's a step-by-step process. It'd be great to have 2 million bucks and just do it all at once, but just not like.
I just want to make sure that we're going to place these in the best locations at this point in time. Mr. Claffey, do you have any other questions?
Sure, so assuming that the full, we approve, and the full board approves at our next meeting later this month, what would you guess the up-and-running date would be?
Well, let me just, let me just throw a little.
I should have asked you first, Mr.
Yeah, the problem with this is, it's escrow funds, okay? So these are funds from the year we just ended budget, we have to get the escrow funds approved by the alderman, okay? So that, I got a, a letter talking about that process, they won't be officially approved in probably like mid-September, okay? My sense is, we won't have a problem getting this approved, but I can't speak for the alderman. Until that point, it would be a risk to get started on their part, because if we didn't get the funds, then what? And, yeah, no, that's, I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, I just ask, because I was thinking about, at what point would we want to request money for the classroom, the portable vents? I just think if, I just think it would be nice if the elementary schools were up and running at roughly the same time.
Okay, well, I guess, how long would it take? Let's say we give you the approval September 15th, how long would it take to put them in?
The induct units?
Yes.
Two to three weeks. We'll do them off hours soon, these are during school time period. The portable, you give me a green light, I could deliver them all tomorrow if needed. And we could, we could put, we will put them in the classroom for you as well.
We don't have supply chain issues with your?
No, no, we, we made a big bet, there's a lot of them.
So as far as discussing funding the classroom units, when would we need to move on that?
Well, Mr. Donovan said we don't have the money right now for the classroom units at this point in time, but in, during the year, we'll see if money becomes available. Right now, we have some units out there, we could, Mr. Smith said, we, if we pulled all the units in, it would probably take care of two schools, right? And then we would have two schools that we wouldn't have the units in, and then that would be probably $100,000. Am I correct, for two schools to get the units left? Going by what Mr. Smith is saying.
Yeah, it might be a little less than that, but, yeah.
What I would like to ideally see is try to get this in before, as I call, disease season starts, before everybody gets, starts getting sick. So then this way, we could see if we, that we won't have to have the absenteeism like we've been having, and that our teachers, our faculty and the rest of the building, and our parents and students will feel comfortable being in school and not having to worry about. This is why I started so far back, when I saw this at T-Bones. That's my favorite restaurant, so that's why I keep, I'm plugging them, T-Bones.
So, so we could use ESER money for the units that we need, say roughly $100,000?
If I can, yeah, ESER will pay for these, yes. Do I have that money right now in ESER? No, but maybe I will. I have another review of ESER on Thursday, review it every quarter, so.
I guess, like, I just think, in fairness, in pursuit of equity, that all the elementary schools would, I just, I fear that if word got out that schools don't have them, some do and some don't, that's just, to me, is an untenable situation.
What we could do, we could approve this tonight, send it to the full board, and ask the full board to, to approve it, but we're not going to do anything until we get the information from Mr. Donovan on the ESER funds, which we should, do we have a full board meeting next week, I think, next Monday? I think we have a, or the week after?
I think it's the week after.
I think it's the week after, so by then, we might be able to know, if you know. That was my concern, I understand what you're saying about the equity piece, you know, because parents are going to say, how come they have it and we don't? Is our school and our kids not as important? And every child, and every school's important here. I just want to make sure that we can get, and believe me, that's why I asked all the questions about all these schools here, that we get this approved, but we can get it approved and still hold it, with the board saying that we approved this, but we're not going to do anything until we get the final word from Mr. Donovan, if he has the ESER funds to do those last two schools. And then parents have to understand that unfortunately, we can't do the high school right now, and two schools that are going to be renovated, we just, it's an unfortunate thing, but if you're going to go through the ren, start the renovations, you know, and I, and I get, I get it with the portables, why can't we have the portables? But unfortunately, it's not going to work with starting of the renovations. I mean, do you agree on that?
Yes, and I'm ready to make a motion if you'd like.
Sure.
To approve the, I didn't write down the motion.
I'm going to try to write it down.
Yes, okay. To, you're so experienced at this, to approve the installation, or no, purchase?
The act, when we do the, the act of pure proposal, act of pure proposal.
In the, not to exceed.
Proposal, as written, in the amount of $600,000, not to exceed, I did that backwards, but that's okay. With the, now you're a teacher, you can help me with the wording, with the.
Understanding?
Understanding.
That.
Mr. Donovan, will give us an update on ESER funds for additional two schools. Does that sound good?
Well, it was, you estimated we had enough for two, I would just say.
Yes.
Portable, portable units for the, for the schools that, for the, well, we only talked, we only talked about elementary schools, we didn't.
Portable units.
If I could intercede, though?
Yes.
So one of the schools, I'm saying already has them, is Main Dunstable. They are on our list of schools that we hope will have the induct system, but I don't think I should be dragging all those units out of those, that school at this point, and sticking it in another school.
Okay.
I'd probably get more complaints from Main Dunstable for ventilation than anywhere else.
For additional three schools, I'll for portable units at this point. We'll just leave it at that, and then you can advise us. Does that sound good, Mr. Donovan?
Yes, I mean, I think we got to look at the funding, we got to look at how many classrooms we have, how many units, if we're going to do this, and so there's, there's some work to do, it's not a, so I think if you break that into two motions, I mean, when you put one dependent on another, I think let's move ahead with the 600, that funding's a separate place.
Could we discuss the, with the under?
You need a motion for the other thing, why don't you just send Sean and I back to do some homework, and we'll get back to you. But I think the first part that, that you wrote down, that motion, let's approve the 600,000 for the induct units.
Okay. Do you second it?
I, I second the changes, so I guess we're just cutting off.
Yeah, I'm just going to cut everything off, and I'm going to make a little note underneath there.
Yep, I definitely, yes, I second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Okay.
That's mine. That's a cheat sheet.
Yeah.
All kinds of phone numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
No, not for you guys, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Have a great night, guys.
Thank you. You too. Good to see you again. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, and when they did the robot, oh, my God. Okay, next thing on the agenda, I'm trying to catch up and write, is the special ed contracts.
Okay, a quick question for you, there was an email sent via you from a citizen regarding Franklin Street?
Yes, and I, that was a while ago.
Are you okay with the answer you've got so far, or would you like to, if you were going to bring that up tonight, I don't know if you were.
I sent the answer to that constituent, I didn't, nothing else was said, so I think she was satisfied with the answer. If anything else comes up, I'll just send you another email.
Okay, because it, you know, the, the building is safe, we wouldn't have put students in it. It had to get a certificate of occupancy from the city and the fire department, you know, it, so I think, I think there were maybe a few pictures shared that showed things that really wasn't what it was. I mean, it was a safe building, we would always, especially with the younger children. So there were some comments made around that, and on Facebook, based on a couple of pictures taken, taken from odd angles. But the building was safe, we are not moving in immediately this year, so that we can finish all the construction work that we had planned, and when we do move in sometime this fall, the building will be safe and ready to go, and have its, once again, certificate of occupancy, so.
I think that some of the comments. Are we going to be getting a tour again, as, so we can see all the completed, what's been completed, when it's safe to go in? I'm putting that word "safe" in there.
I'd say so. So there's really a couple of things that have to happen. They have to finish the installation of the mechanical system, then we have to put in the emergency egress stairwells on either side of the, of the school. We're finishing up the handicap ramp in the very front of the school, and then the rest of it's relatively minor stuff. So I would say sometime in late September, early October, we can arrange a tour, be safe at that point.
That would be great. I think Mr. Claffey would like to see, because we saw when they bought the building.
Sure.
And to see what they've done with the building, I mean, especially us, before and some after pictures, it, and we could see how our students are going to be in the building, with the older students upstairs, and our younger students downstairs. So, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, to the special ed contract. This contract is for a renewal of a current online curriculum used by students on the autism spectrum. It's called Rethink. We used to use Rethink and another tool. The teachers have decided that Rethink is the better one, so last year, they chose just Rethink, and they've decided, between them and the special ed managers, to continue with that. So this is a, a request to approve the renewal of the Rethink learning platform for the 2223 school year, at a cost of $15,700. If you did notice, it says on the quote page that the above prices are valid for 30 days from 3/31/2022. That's inaccurate. We actually got this about three days ago. So that quote is good, and the funding for this will come from the IDEA grant. Any questions on this?
Any questions? Okay. So, I'll make a motion to approve the Rethink renewal for the 2223 school year for 35 special education teachers and power educators, and 90 students with autism, at $15,700. This will be funded from the special ed IDA grant.
You have a second?
All those in favors?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the quarterly credit card report.
Okay, so last month, this showed up to my surprise, as I was just coming back from vacation, so I took a look at it. Basically, we supply this each quarter. This is, this shows the board and everyone else what we use our credit cards for. We have two of them in the district, they're not used, as you can see, too frequently. The first quarter of this calendar year, there was 8,521, and this, this, this past quarter, 9,341. Of that, the largest item was the, you see, supplies HVAC is $2,978 there. That was for a hoist, for a piece of equipment, that the only place who could find it was on eBay. So that was a plan ops purchase through eBay. We don't do that very frequently, but we were able to find it, and we put the piece of equipment back to work. Other than that, the one other thing, you'll, you'll look, in the month of April, it's $2,040. It's under dues and memberships. That really was for conferences, for a group of people, so it, it really should be under conferences and seminars, so I've corrected that on the sheet, so when you receive this next quarter, it'll be in the, in the correct column. And then other than that, it's used for just times when we either have to use it, we do use it for advertising, that's the thing we typically use it for monthly, and other than that, we only use it when a purchase order, when they, when the firm will not take a purchase order, and we can't find it through a firm that does.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, we wouldn't have to make a motion, this is just easy stuff, right?
Yeah.
I never remember, I've been here long enough, I don't remember. Now the financial report.
Okay, so we will use the month-by-month one, so that's the second one, I think, in the, in the package. And, so keep in mind, we're still basically closing the books. So if you look in the, the first section, obviously, the salary and wages, the full-time wage number on this report is 4.5 million, which I said, that doesn't look right, because we're not paying anybody in fiscal year '23 that works school year, and obviously, our largest group of people to pay is the teachers, and so, but what has happened is that the, the system, the payroll for the July teacher pay hit this July. That's, that's being backed out sort of as we speak, so that, because July and August are costs associated with last year for, for the teachers. So in here, these numbers, when you get this report next month, you'll see July being closer to a million than 4.5 million, okay? And same for the part-time wages, it's obviously a much smaller number, but that will be, that will be less. And just running down these other ones, and even with the, the other, the wages per diem, the 51412, that also includes fiscal year '22 charges. The longevity number is in, is in, it was paid in error, that will be corrected, and you'll see a zero, a negative there in the month of August. The additional hours number, the 260,000, that's summer school, so most of that is, in fact, costs, that's the summer school costs you see in the months, obviously, of July and August. Stipends, there are the adult ed stipends, which were related to last year, and the head teacher stipends, which also relate to last year. So those, most of that dollar amount will get moved out. The retirement and separation pay, that 28,000 is basically principals, a director, some of Sean's trade staff, the plumber and the HVAC that just recently left, and a, and a group of paras. So the teachers will start hitting, probably in August and September, you'll start to see the bigger numbers. So that's that. Other than that, there's, as you can see, there's not too much activity, it's the first month, so just scanning through the rest, the services, professional services, not much, property services, other services. On page three, tuition out of district is a minus, we received a check from one of the schools, because the, some students, we pay a certain amount, and then the state pays the rest, and there was a $60 error in what the state paid, so they sent us back $60, that's, and there, we haven't made any payments thus, this year. The plumbing supplies also has a negative, a credit, that was for a couple of returns, that we brought the items back in July, and we had made the purchase in June. In a sense, that should be pushed backwards, but it's only $1,000, so. And then the other, if you look at the 71, the equipment, computer equipment and computer software, which are on the bottom of page three and the top of page four, those are the large numbers this month, but that's what IT will do, they come in June, request their purchases, they make the purchases in the summer, while they have some summer staff to help them get, get everything straightened out for the start of the school year, and the computer software, you'll see the first two to three months, those are typical, typically annual, annual licenses, and so we typically pay those in the first two to three months of the year. And the capital outlay, number 81, the 268,000, that is something else, that's for the track itself, and that should be pushed back to last year. We, we used some of the money, the, some of the excess money last year to, to fix that track, so that's another thing that needs to be corrected. So when this report was run, there was still work to be done at the closing by the city, so we'll see this in a lot better shape come, come August. So there were a few things that, when I was looking at it, I was a little surprised, but as it turned out, that we just haven't made all the year-end corrections. So other than that, first month, pretty straightforward.
Any questions, Mr. Claffey?
I just, oh, so 55200, dues and membership, I was curious, what are some of the dues that the 20-plus thousand dollars were used for?
The biggest piece of that is the principals all get a dues, it's in their contract, the, I think it's--
It's not for a country club, I hope, or--
No, country clubs, no, no. That'd be nice if we did that, but we don't.
I know they, yeah.
Yeah, the principals all get, it says, principals, assistant principals all get one, and it, and I believe they get the national one, and the president of the union also gets the state one. And also in there, I didn't double-check, but also the superintendent, the assistant superintendents also get sort of a state membership in a couple of state-run organizations.
You're all set?
All set.
Okay. We need a motion on this to accept the report? No? Good. It's the next one we have to do, right?
Well, I don't think you do this time, because there's only--
Oh, good. Like nothing.
Like three items, nothing over 10,000.
Perfect.
So there's just three of them, you're not going to see too many entries this early in the year. Excuse me. First one is when Lisa Gingras, the athletic director, put her budget together, she was unaware that the local golf courses used to provide free practice time for our golf team, and they're no longer doing that. So we have to pay a fee, so it's 2,700 per school, per team. So she took the money from her dues and membership account, and she's, hopefully, you know, she can move some money around as the year goes on. So she had to move it into the rentals, because golf is a ball sport, and she's going to need to pay the, the courses, or the course, I believe, they're just going to one course for practice. The second one is Mount Pleasant decided to buy a new laminator, so they hadn't budgeted for that, so they're taking out of the supply account and putting it into equipment. And the third and last one is South High School is taking 5,000 from their supply account and putting it into furniture and fixtures to purchase 25 desks for a new classroom. Now, I don't think that's a new-built classroom, it's just maybe a room that they're using for a classroom, that they didn't have desks in before. So that is, that is it for the transfer report, and there's nothing over 10,000, so no, no motion required.
Perfect. Mr. Claffey, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay.
So the last thing I just want to mention--
Okay.
That the, as you recall, last year, it was free lunch for all students. Federal government decided to go back to the old way for this year, so everyone will need to fill out the forms for free and reduced lunch, so we'll be doing what we've been doing since I can remember, and it won't be like last year. So we do have a new system in place, so hopefully, it'll, it'll help students through the line quicker. And obvious, when we start the school, if the form isn't filled out and stuff, we're not going to turn away students, but we do that typically in October, I believe, October 1st, so. But, so all the parents that had been filling those out, they go back to filling those forms out. Some are done automatically, it depends on if they receive certain benefits, but that's, that's how we'll have to do it. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
So will the district be sending out any kind of communication on that to parents?
Yes, we've already done that, and we'll continue to do it because of the change. We'll have to do it a little more frequently.
You're all set? Okay, anything else?
That is all I have for this evening.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're adjourned at 7:07. Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everyone.